All right, good evening. Today is Thursday, August 25th at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangy Local Schools Board of Education. This is a regular meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Dabberco.
Present.
Mr. Lester.
Present.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Dr. Wallach.
Here.
And Dr. Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join the meeting in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
So in terms of the agenda, we did amend the agenda to include the second executive session at the end of the meeting. The original agenda only had one. So that would -- I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any other discussion on the agenda?
Okay.
With that, please call the roll, Ms. Hatfield.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the Board President's report. I just have a couple of things. So one, as you will see on the agenda, there's a board action item to accept with regret the resignation of Ms. Hatfield, our treasurer. She's found another opportunity with an order bind, which in that respect, we're very happy for her. And so a little bit of the executive session is trying to now think through what's next and how do we kind of go through replacing Ms. Hatfield. So we'll have dialogue on that tonight and we'll want to report back to the community as plans get settled. And Ms. Hatfield will be with us through the September meeting, so we will have our chances to say goodbye before she's done. Brandon, I know you had an update on the Wellness Committee if you want to provide that.
Yep, thank you so much. So as we talked about at our last board meeting, we had really an overwhelming response to the ad hoc student mental health and well-being committee. Had about 180 applicants overall from the community, which is just, it really speaks to the importance of this issue. We have been spending the last several weeks trying to refine the committee. We now have a final committee, which I'll read through here as we go. And then our first meeting is going to be in about a little less than two weeks. So we're going to be starting off and moving forward. One of the things that we wanted to do in structuring this committee was really get input from a lot of different stakeholders, including our staff, who are in schools, our parents, and our students, specifically our high school students. So we wanted to have one student from each high school that can really speak to the student experience. So in terms of membership from the district level, we have Dr. Fede as our Chief Academic Officer. Alicia Berens is our Director of Student Well-being and Katie Branson, the supervisor there. We have a school counselor, Ali Nicolay. We have an elementary school representative and Jessica Reed, one of the teachers there. Dan Harris is a high school teacher who will be joining us. We have eight parents from across the community who bring really a wide variety of expertise, including medical doctors, psychologists, crisis counseling experience, as well as people who have had experience with mental health issues in other ways. So we have Allison Hool, Rachel Morocco, Renee Van Vorus, Christina Day, Marcy Freed, Cassie Williams, Michelle Gordon, and Felida Moran. And then we have our four students, Dirkard Karthik, London Michelle, Jaden Buzzard, and Amy Hansen. And then Dr. Dabberco will be joining me on the committee as we work through it. So our goal is really to be meeting throughout the school year about once a month and to be bringing a set of rolling recommendations as we go, as well as the final report at the end of the year, to really bring it full circle and then we as a board can decide where we're going to go next with it.
Great, sounds like great progress.
Yeah.
Anyone have any other updates? I know it feels like we were just here, so. All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion, complete the President's report, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Section 122.22G4 for the purpose of reviewing negotiations with public employees and to consider the compensation of public employees. So that, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on going into executive session? So I will say this, we will try to be as brief as we can. This is something hopefully we can get through rather quickly. That's why we added the second executive session at the end for some other issues that will take more time. So Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco.
Yes.
Dr. Wallach.
Yes.
Mr. Lester.
Yes.
Dr. Weiss.
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Called the meeting back to order at 6:56 PM. And we'll move on to our presentation items. The first presentation item is the professional development plan. Vince DiTilio and Nicole Cruthers. Or just Vince, playing solo?
Yeah.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name's Vince DiTilio. For those of you that don't know me, and I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction for Olentangy. Nicole Cruthers is our new Assistant Director of Professional Learning. She is playing mom tonight, like she should be, at Glen Oak on curriculum night. So just want to give her a shout out. She's done a great job of getting right into that role and working collaboratively with me. So every year, you know, we come out and we'd like to share the professional learning focus with the board and the community and kind of let you know what we have planned for our teachers. We think, obviously, I'm biased, but I think this is a really important part of our success as Olentangy. And it's not so much of what we plan, it's the desire to learn that our teachers have. And sometimes it's overwhelming because constantly asking for opportunities to learn, constantly asking, what about this, what about that? So we just see that as a really, really positive, really a piece of our success here in Olentangy. So before I jump into the focus, just want to step back for a second and just let you know kind of how we come about a professional learning focus. First and foremost, we always keep the district mission in mind. You know, anything we're going to focus on with teachers, we have to feel that there's a strong connection to the mission to maximize learning. In the same way with the strategic plan, when that rolled out, that really gave us, you know, kind of a 10,000-foot view at where we're headed as a district. The mastery of learning section and also the alleviation of the non-academic barriers really play into much of the PD we've done over the last four to five years. Our Portrait of a Learner, I've talked about that here before. It's something, again, near and dear to my heart. I think it's a really, become a really important driving force for our staff, our students, our leaders here, that we recognize that there are skills and dispositions that we need to grow as leaders, students, learners, that are going to help us be successful in whatever we're doing here and help our students be successful after school. And then finally, the Olentangy foundations, which are sort of our tried and true kind of components of a high-quality learning environment, curriculum, instruction, assessment, and that instructional context. So we always kind of start there because that's really where we are generating the ideas for the plan from. So the way PD works in the district, obviously, most people are aware, we have three professional development days. Those three days, we, as a curriculum department, develop learning opportunities, create things for the buildings. The buildings have a PD planning team, each building with an administrator on it, and they come and work collaboratively with us to kind of take and mold those opportunities to fit their building. So there's consistency, but there's also a lot of room for them to shift towards the needs of their teachers. Aside from the three PD days, there's also curriculum building visits that happen throughout the year that are tied to the focus. And there's also professional development classes, after-school days for credit, that are tied to that focus. So it's not just the three days, it really does spread out throughout the year. So over the last, since 2018, I guess, when Portrait of a Learner really took hold, we've been sort of on a journey of learning. And I kind of tell it like a story, that what we were beginning to explore was that academic success, and we always knew this, but really focusing in on some of those soft skills that students need to pair with content knowledge. So the dispositions of being purposeful, being resilient, being curious, and being kind, we really feel pair well with the academic content knowledge and then, you know, obviously impact students both their well-being and their academic success. So as we started to take that apart, we started to look at different components of teaching and learning that both, that research showed had an impact on both academics and well-being at the same time. So that's kind of what all these concepts have in common. We started with kind of the baseline, relationships and interactions. It's the most kind of essential component of teaching and learning. If you don't have those in your classroom, there's a pretty low ceiling on what students can achieve. The next year, in 1920, we kind of looked inward, the ability of a learner to regulate their thinking, to regulate their emotions, to self-regulate their behavior. This is a, like a real, real high-end skill that, obviously, like, we're still working on these things as adults, but it makes sense to work on it in the school year, in the classroom. 2021, the idea of taking those learners and really creating a community in the classroom. That was a real powerful year of learning where our staff, I think, really dug in and showed some real improvement in their ability to bring together that classroom of learners and create a community in that classroom that takes care of one another. Last year, we shared this idea of agency. Once you have that community, kids can do a lot, right? They can really take ownership of their learning, they can influence, they can make choices, they can use their voice. And that was a really powerful piece of learning last year, also as students came back from COVID and back into the classroom. So this year really is kind of the final chapter, I think, of this story. And student engagement has been a theme throughout all these other focuses. So it's kind of been something that has tied together these ideas. And based off the feedback we received, staff was really interested in kind of going back and looking back at some of our past focuses, diving back into them, seeing how they connect together. So we decided to sort of use student engagement this year as a way to look back at where we've been, what we're doing in the classroom, and then how that can take us on to our next step of that journey. So when we think about engagement, I really like this quote, it was something that we sort of settled on early in our discussions about engagement, and I'll just read it to you. It says, "High levels of student engagement have a significant correlation to both academic achievement and overall well-being. Increasing engagement requires educators to intentionally design opportunities for students with engagement in mind. They must move past seeking compliance and aspire to engage students deeply on a cognitive, behavioral, and emotional level." I feel like that really sums up what we're thinking when we talk about student engagement, specifically moving past compliance. That's an area where we're really diving in, this idea of moving past just doing what you're told, but really engaging with the teaching and learning. There's this idea of being engaged by something, which kids are engaged by videos, phones, things like that, but engaging with a really powerful lecture or engaging with a really powerful novel is very different. The other way we've been understanding and thinking about engagement, and I'll just share a few other brief points, is the idea of, one way to define engagement is through how committed a student is to the learning and how much attention they're paying to it. So commitment and attention is another lens that we've been using to think about engagement. Obviously, curiosity, participation, that intrinsic desire to learn more is kind of how we're defining that in the classroom. And then just really, really coming back to this idea that when students are engaged, they are, they feel better about themselves, they feel valued, but they also learn more. And I think that's really what we're resting this conversation on, is that it does a little bit of both. And then just finally, our question, we always have a question for the year that we try to answer in some way, shape, or form, and that's how might increasing engagement impact student learning, behavior, and well-being? And that's intentionally broad because this ties together lots of different departments within the district. And just to end, you know, it's not that student engagement isn't happening in our district, that's not why we're focused on it, it's that we want to, we want to leverage it, we want to build it up. So just a couple of cool examples that I found as I, some of these are from last spring, but some of these are from the first week of school as I was out thinking about engagement. On the left side, there's some students at Olentangy Academy who are working on a collaborative team to solve a problem that involved building a water pump. And I just, I don't know, I love the focus of them on this task and the collaboration that's going on there. Honestly, I don't know how to build a water pump, but they were very engaged in it. The picture in the center of the student with the tiles, Mrs. Nye at Alum Creek, I've spent a decent amount of time in her classroom, she's very interested in exploratory play at the kindergarten level, where students are learning through play and exploring with manipulatives. And I mean, I just thought this student just so immersed in those number tiles, like something that could seem so trivial, but just her focus, and I'm just kind of curious about what she's thinking, but she's definitely engaged. Below that, at, I believe this is Mrs. Wheeler's classroom at Berkshire Middle School, this is a, these students are collaboratively solving a math problem vertically. Vertically just means standing up around a whiteboard. And they've been doing a lot of work with this small group vertical problem solving in the mathematical classroom. And what they notice is students are much more engaged. And we know sometimes when we stand up and circle around something, how that changes the dynamic. And then finally, last week, I was out at Orange Middle School, eighth grade social studies, I love this because if anyone's seen the show, Nailed It on Netflix, really funny cooking show. But the eighth grade teachers there concocted a Nailed It challenge for their students. They had to recreate a monument from Washington DC, which they're obviously all going to DC at some point. And I just thought the joy and like collaboration of these students, you don't get all that many smiles out of eighth graders, so I thought that was pretty cool and definitely an example of engagement. And in closing, you know, we just want to build off these successes that we have in the district, create more learning experiences where students are really committed and paying deep attention to their learning. So that's all I have for tonight, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question about your curriculum visit. What does that look like?
Okay, oh yeah, the curriculum building visits. So they are short, about 15, 20-minute visits to the building, where we try to touch every grade level at a middle school or department at a high school. And we share something very practical, a tool that they could, we always say, could they implement that tool next period with little or no planning? And it always ties back to the district focus.
Okay. So the other question I had was, when you're doing your PD, you talked about how it's aligned, and I'm seeing it as like top and then working its way down to the building. And then you also talked about principals with the PD. Are teachers informing what PD, you probably know where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
Help me understand how that works.
Yeah, so first and foremost, the way they inform it on a broad scale is through the feedback that we gather. So after each professional development day, we gather feedback and then we provide that back to the building planning team for their specific building. The other thing we do is that then at the end of the PD, at the end of the year, we do a large PD survey that we've presented on before here that gives satisfaction, but also we ask staff if they have ideas, what's on their mind. And then the collaborative team, which this is fairly new in the district, where there is a team from each building who's dedicated to helping translate the PD into something really meaningful for their building and their grade level. And they work collaboratively with their principal in the building to do that.
Thanks for what you do.
Thanks.
We always, we've always took, kind of provided a broad template, but then the buildings take it and make it their own. And you know, obviously, this is year 20 for me, and this is, I will say something, probably one of the things I'm most proud of is what we do to help grow our staff and our staff's commitment to that work. And Vince has taken it to another level in his time here and our, you know, we've built the schedules to support this, that they have that time to do that work during the day, and it really is very impactful.
So I love the intentionality around thinking of the progression, right, of how you're building on each block. It's not just random things here and there, but it's a progression. How do you, when you get new teachers who come in, how do you get them up to speed so that they're able to continue to get all of the value of that progressive, you know, education?
Yeah, absolutely. Like, how do they know the story we've been telling? And I think that starts at our New Teacher Academy. We've really tried to work in those ideas and concepts into that, and especially those district documents that we're driving that from, like Portrait of a Learner and the foundations, those are really like the core of New Teacher Academy. And then, you know, also, within the PD days, we also do reviews too, or we kind of call back to past practices. So we try to bring those things back up for them. And honestly, too, a lot of that is done through their department and collaboration time where they're sharing with other teachers or department heads are kind of sharing.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next discussion item is expanding community involvement and partnerships. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, and good evening. I am very excited to share this presentation as it dovetails, I think, very nicely with what Mr. DiTilio just shared with us on ways that we can continue to engage our students in different ways than perhaps we have before. So starting with the district's mission to facilitate maximum learning for every student and our strategic plan, we are going to do a deeper dive into one of those strategic plan goals that really directly ties to our mission and talking about every student. And a lot of the things we do, do hit every student, but I think this will continue, this work that we're doing in this area will continue to enhance that. So focusing in on expanding community involvement and partnerships leads us to the project that we're working on right now. It's a pilot program, and it allows us to increase our value, our partnership and the value that we have placed on our school and community partnerships. And how we are doing that is with a company called Bridged. We are piloting a program along with Bridged, and I'm happy to introduce Chris Speck, who is with us today from Bridged. He and his partner in the company, Christie Bertolo, who is unable to be with us this evening, have started this company. Chris and Christie came from Ohio State and created two companies, kind of doing the work that they had been doing at Ohio State, working with corporate partners. They have one company, Unite, that works with higher education doing this work, and then they have Bridged, which is working with the K-12 industry. And so we are their first partner and pilot partner in this program, funded through the ESC of Central Ohio. And we have been working for the past three or four months on getting this project off the ground. So essentially, what is Bridged, or sometimes we will refer to it as Bridge Ed because we think that's kind of catchy, they are an activation team really created to bridge that gap between K-12. So they're really putting a framework in place for us to work with corporations or companies in our community. So oftentimes, a teacher will have a neighbor and they will say to their neighbor, hey, you work at such and such company, can you come talk to my class? And that's great, but that only extends to that one group of people that that teacher might know at his or her grade level or department. And if they happen to go on to another job or place, then that relationship is no longer really in place. So this allows us to build that framework and really put these communities, as Chris and Christie say, on speed dial to work with us. And the goal is to really impact workforce development, internships and hiring, philanthropic giving-like scholarships for students, and even perhaps teacher grants, and then ultimately student success and defining paths forward. So this is really where we're going to talk to our students in middle school and high school, as well as our parents, which I'll talk about here in a second, about opportunities in the workforce for them that they may not have considered or even known about previously. So obviously, Chris and Christie Bridged, working with ESC to pilot this program. Here at Olentangy, both Todd Meyer and myself are the project leads, and we have been meeting along with Chris and Christie with our middle school teachers, high school teachers, STEM Academy principals, our school counselors, and then eventually we'll be talking with our middle school and high school students as we move this forward. This doesn't mean that elementary teachers won't have an opportunity to benefit in some ways, just at this point, these are the areas that we are working with. So through the summer months, we had the opportunity to meet with several companies, share our mission, vision, and goals within the district, and for them to also share back with us what they're looking for and really match the needs and the strengths of both the companies and Olentangy. And so I am proud to say, these are the companies that we are going to be working with. So JP Morgan Chase, Alfred Construction, Honda, Ohio State University, Wexner Medical Center, and Worthington Industries. And our hope is, as you see Intel there with coming soon, or TBD, they're not quite ready to have this conversation, but just today, we, along with Mr. Rafe, had a conversation with Jobs Ohio, who is working with Intel, about the feasibility of bringing them on board with us when they're ready, which may not be for another year or so. But we were excited to share who we were partnering with and what that's going to look like. So we'll dive into this a little bit. So what does this model look like in working with Bridged? And so I think you can see with K-12 school districts, some of the pieces that are important to us, I talked a little bit about those, the philanthropic giving, so those scholarships. So on our senior scholarship night, we really see for the district, this opportunity for more scholarships for students or teacher grants. OEF, Olentangy Education Foundation, also is connected to learning more and being part of this. But all of these opportunities involve that engagement that we were just talking about, that experiential learning, but also opportunities for externships almost for our staff and really kind of everything surrounding that circle, including certifications down the road and other ways to learn more. One of the things I just want to highlight here is that parent engagement. I think we all know, if we're parents in the room and whatever stage our children have been in, that we have an idea from our school experience and after high school or college, what we expected for ourselves and then now for our children. And I think it's going to be key, and we heard it from every single company, to engage with parents, to help them understand the workforce today and what the workforce today needs. And where they might not have, you know, found a connection for their student or their child quite yet, there could hopefully be that connection here with this. So then, the business community has all of those same desires, so they're bridging the gap, connecting the two entities together. I think by and large, we heard from the companies that they don't connect well with that K-12 for the same reasons we are busy too, doing all the things that our staff is doing, and this framework will really make a difference. So just real quick, here's where we've been in the early spring and through the summer months, we've been meeting. The goal was to meet with up to 10 companies to select five. We had those five pretty much right away. In June, we did surveys with our staff that we met with and talked about the engagement opportunities that could perhaps occur. In July, we started forming collaboration teams and talking with these companies about the plans that we will actually enact right now in this semester and began to activate those partnerships. One of the ways that we activated those partnerships right out of the gate was at the Business Advisory Council last week. We have invited those companies to be part of the Business Advisory Council, and then at convocation, they were part of the expo, the partner expo that staff could go have kind of those conversations with. And then Mr. Rafe shared in his convocation remarks with our staff that we are sharing this partnership. And then the partnership will be reviewed in November of 2022 with a hope to go back to the ESC for additional funding for the pilot. So how this works is we'll assess what we're, what we're, what So how this works is, we'll assess what we're, what we're, what we in the schools and the businesses want, start to create that collaboration team, these checkmarks are there with the things that we've already done, make the plan, and we're starting to activate, and then we'll be in that feedback loop. And the metrics we're looking at is, are the companies engaged? Are we engaged? The opportunities that we're providing to both students and staff? How many and, and how are the students, parents and teachers impacted? And then the involvement in the community, because we go back to that strategic plan goal about increasing, expanding the community engagement. So just a little bit about some of the things I've shared, we, like I said, engaged five companies who are excited, very excited to be strategic partners with us. And in that, in these conversations, we've already identified 58 engagement opportunities with these five companies. I'm going to share just a couple examples in a second about what those could look like. But we think between high school and middle school, we could potentially impact up to 10,000 students. We could impact, that number is maybe a little bit high for high school and middle school teachers and staff, but they have the opportunity, again, also, we're going to probably talk about how elementary teachers can be impacted as well, our parents and our community. So I mentioned 58 engagement opportunities. These are some of the areas in which we will have engagement opportunities. So we'll have speakers or hands-on learning experience, or some people have talked about bringing in the virtual glasses and just really helping students see what workers are, the virtual reality glasses, that's what I meant to say, in the, in what they're using in their companies right now. The opportunity examples that I have here, we call in that top box there, the Opportunities Unlimited. That's really kind of old-school career fair day, but something we're dreaming up much better than that. So we don't want students to just walk around a gymnasium and kind of drift by tables and grab flyers. We want them to have great conversations with the, these company partners about what they really, how they really can see themselves working in the, in those environments and what opportunities might be available. Collaboration hours, this is at our secondary level where our departments and teams have collaboration opportunities. So these companies are willing to come either virtually or in person and talk to them during their collaboration hours and really help them understand what their companies are doing and hear from the staff about what would help their students as well. Classroom speaking opportunities, which, again, we've always done, but in this case, we'll have more of a framework to hopefully have a bigger impact. The live surgery stream is exciting from Ohio State Wexner Medical Center. They are willing to livestream a surgery to all of our high school theaters for all of our students to see, like, for example, an ACL surgery. And not only that, then they would have everyone who's involved in that surgery talk about the job that they have and what, how it impacted the surgery and what part that they played. So I don't know about you, but most people will say, oh, only doctors and nurses work at Wexner Medical Center. Well, of course, when you think about it for a second, that's not true, and there are so many jobs and opportunities available there. I could go on and on, but just real quick, we're also going to engage our student broadcast journalism classes and journalism classes to write and experience some of this so they can share it out with their peers and the parents and whoever else reads all of their student publications or watches their programs. And then with our partnership, we have, with Ohio State, we've also talked about providing the sports medicine field trip for them to talk to trainers, to learn directly from everyone involved in sports medicine, what they, what their job is, how they do it, and perhaps learn about things that they didn't already envision existing. And that's just a couple quick examples. Each of these companies, each of these corporations have shared some really cool and exciting opportunities for students and staff to experience what's happening, not only in their workplaces, but they bringing it to us in our, in our school district as well. So that's a quick overview of, maybe not so quick, but an overview of where we are. We're very excited. Our staff, so many people came up to us after convocation, and we've talked to building leadership teams and principals, and I think it was Mr. Starner who said, this is some of the most important work we were doing, because we're finding opportunities for kids where perhaps they didn't realize there was a great connection for them, that hopefully will have something that we didn't have before to make a difference in that pathway for that student.
All right. I think this is fantastic, and Mark, it is something you've been kind of noodling on for a while, so it's good to see it get moved forward. Is there a segment of the student population we're targeting for these opportunities, or is it pretty?
I think it's broad, but we also are targeting, targeting the mentorship classes, as well as the STEM Academy are some of the first, what we might call low-hanging fruit. The structure of their classes already provide the opportunity for us to kind of put this framework in place. Anything else you would add to that?
I think initially, it's, it's, it's high schools, and so these, the businesses are very interested in the high schools first, but they know it's kind of a long play too. So they want to get in, I mean, some of the metrics are, are going to be how many people get hired, you know, after college, in lieu of college or beyond. So we're excited about the opportunity to eventually start to track there, but the companies are initially interested in, in the high school, and as this pilot happens, I mean, we have until November to make an impact to, to get extended, so that's where we are.
And I'm thinking of the circular nature of it relative to curriculum too, right? Because these companies are seeing what they need, right? Seeing what, what gaps are out there in the world and finding ways to get, you know, kids excited about it, but also hoping to build up, you know, future workforce. And so maybe you could speak a little bit to how we envision this working over time, where that feedback will then help us as we're tailoring what we're doing from a curricular perspective, and helping to ensure that, that students are ready to help, you know, be productive members of society and build up some of those things.
Yeah, so I think the teachers, the teachers are definitely a part of this, so they want to start to get involved and have those teachers come out, view their facilities, show them the pathways, because they can impact not only the student, but I can't really speak to the curriculum, but definitely they would love to do that. I know in higher ed, the companies are always trying to get in there and influence curriculum.
Yeah, and I, I mean, obviously, we have to be the masters of our curriculum. It's important that, that we have ownership of that. But, but taking input and hearing what is out there and what, what real-world issues we need to be solving and addressing is an important part of education, so.
I think the collaboration hours, that, that they're going to have the, the dialogue on a, I think, a regular basis. It's not a one-shot thing. That will probably inform the companies and this, and our own staff, where they will be able to take that and really continue to dive into what does that mean, just like Vince was talking about, the collaboration that's already going on. I think this is a natural extension of that.
I'm going to piggyback off of Mr. Lester's comments there. I was thinking the same thing. I've always been very impressed with the opportunities that the district provides students to really explore their passions and, and get grounded in what they're interested in at an earlier age so that they're not confronted with making big choices, rush out of high school or something like that. So I see this as, as such a wonderful way to potentially influence the curriculum and give us more opportunities to allow the students to, to develop a skill set that really sets them up and positions them well for whatever lies beyond high school. So this is fantastic.
And then those students are engaged, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's great. That live surgery stream, like, can I come visit that?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the, we didn't really talk about middle school, but two of the companies have middle school Girls Who Code programs that they are excited to engage with us on that. So that's just one of the middle school opportunities that we're also talking about too, or planning on, I should say.
Just one question. Going from 10 to 5, can we not work with more?
So I think we can. So when the project, if the project moves forward beyond November, that would be one of our proposals, is to increase it continually. Like Mr. Rafe said, the, some of these companies have already started reaching out saying, we want to be a part of this. Now that we start to hear about it, they have spouse maybe teaching in the district, and they start to hear about it, so. And it'd be actually immediately, once we first put this on LinkedIn, we had Ohio State Wexner Medical Center call us immediately, so we want to be a part of this. So it can definitely extend past, is a long answer to your question.
And I think our goal is to really have some smart wins to then share back with potential future partners too, so that...
Because this starts snowballing even with the, even with this collaboration group we have of all the high school principals, and they're like, what about this company? What about this company? So they get really excited about it too, so that there's definitely an appetite that's high within this district to do more, and the companies as well.
Well, we, and as, as, I look at it, there's an arms race for talent, and Intel coming into the Central Ohio is going to change that dramatically, and the backend of the, the supply chain that feeds Intel is even, is, is going to be even more impactful. And we've got incredibly talented kids in this district graduating and, and looking at that, what that long play is. I want to think that in some cases, it's like NIL deals for our kids, as they start, as they start looking to get, I mean, and Ohio State is committed to, Wexner Medical Center is committed to hiring our graduates, paying for their college tuition, giving them a job that, then they can take whatever pathway, once they're in the hospital system, doesn't have to be a doctor and nurse, could be an accountant, could be a, you know, somebody in hospital administration, or all those kind of businesses are looking at that with our kids. But, you know, I, I appreciate you saying, I've been thinking, I've been thinking about this for a long time, it's one of those things that just kept kicking down the road, but I met Corinne Berger, who's in, in charge of the Chase facility, and I thanked her for paying her tax bill. They're a great community partner. It's awesome to have Chase in our community. But I said to her, I apologize, because I said, we don't really give you anything back. And we, I really think we have to figure out a way to give you something back. And we started, I was telling Chris that story, and we said, well, he goes, that's exactly what I do with, with the higher ed community. And, and we're bigger than every college and university in the state other than Ohio State. So why wouldn't we have that same kind of corporate community engagement with our, and, but it was just a matter of having somebody smart enough to put, put it all together. So thank you, I appreciate you jumping on board. And the ESC has been great. They, they did fund this pilot program for us, so I appreciate Tom Goodney and the ESC for, for helping us with that. And I think it's sustainable and scalable. I've talked to Governor Dewine about what we're doing, he's very excited, Pat Teaberry, very excited. And I think it is something that we can replicate in a lot of districts and, and create a workforce development program in Ohio that will be good for all of Ohio.
I think, yes, workforce development, but also this idea of vision building for kids, and, and I want to think the targeting can continue to move, and not targeting in a bad way, but the population of students you're looking at, because I want students to be exposed to things that they never thought they get paid for, that they think's cool. So I'm just really thankful for you being here.
Or to under, I mean, and this is what I was saying, is to understand, it's one thing to see a career on a page, right? To take a, a career test, and it says, you should be this. It's another thing to see it in action, to understand it, to get that perspective, so that you don't have to spend two or three years in college trying to figure out what you want to do. You, you understand it, and that's a benefit to the kids, it's a benefit to, to society.
I think when, on that point, one of the companies we met with talked about the students that they hire out of high school who do the job, get the on-the-job training, are better equipped than the person they hire after a four-year traditional degree to do the job that they're doing, because they have to go back and give the company specific training to that person and catch them up on all the technology and things that have changed in the four years they've been in college, while this other person is already that far ahead. And I think that's a really good point to share with parents who don't maybe have exposure to that.
All right, thank you very much. Your superintendent's report, Mr. Rafe?
Good job, Ms. Davis. Well done. Thank you. All right. Well, we've had a busy couple weeks here since our last meeting. Lots happened. And again, thank you for everybody for being here and welcome. We started off with our convocation, so I want to congratulate Leslie Davidson from Liberty Middle School and Kim Profio from our Olentangie Food Service Department. They were our district certified and classified employees of the year. It was a great, a great celebration at our, our convocation. We had our Olentangie Education Foundation Zulentangie event, so there's our Olentangie Education Foundation Board pictured here at the, I'm a little disappointed they didn't get a giraffe lurking over you guys in the background, but Dr. Wallach, good job with the foundation, putting that together. It was a great night, a great event. I loved the bidding to fund the, the program, the ACT program, that was interesting and dynamic, watching all those names fly across the screen, so it was a lot of fun, great event. At convocation, I would give a shout out to Shanahan Middle School Vocal Music Director Katie Silcot, who organized a staff choir, so we had over 100 staff members come and perform standby meat during the convocation sessions. I wish I had a pointer, because in the back, you can see Mr. Meyer, Dr. Fettie, they're the ones who look like they're off key, and it's not rocking, and they're rocking differently, but...
They're definitely off key.
You guys can, you can reprise it here.
Mrs. Davis was up there too, so thanks to you guys for getting up there. Mr. Wright, Mr. Hattfield and I respectfully passed. They did a great job though.
Thanks.
So again, we, we opened school last Thursday and welcomed 20, over 23,000 students with, with our preschool kids, they don't count in our ADM, but we, we count them certainly. So 27 different facilities across the, across the district. We rolled out 159 buses, and we served 11, over 11,500 meals a day. And then, as I told the people at convocation, we're going to do that on Thursday and then Friday and every day until next May. So just a great job by all, all the team, getting everybody together and, and school starting. You know, I, I think there's just been a lot of things that have been put in place that have helped get this year off right, and the feeling of normalcy is just really good. Want to give congratulations to Berlin High School. The Bears were named the America's Most Spirited High School, and you really, Dr. Wallach was at, at the pep rally, ended up covered in confetti, because they lit off 240 confetti cannons. God bless Dewey, the custodian there, who ended up having to clean it up, but it was one heck of a show. And Varsity Brands presented Mr. Spinner and the Bears with a $25,000 check, so congratulations to Berlin for that. We had 150 families attend Orange Middle School for the Parent Technology Night. Our technology team and technology chairs came out, presented on how to manage all of our district technology tools effectively, so thank you, Mr. Sexton and the technology team for putting that together. Dr. Behrens was named the Delaware Moral Mental Health Recovery Services Board's Key to Success Community Partner Award winner. That's one heck of a mouthful, Dr. Behrens, but it is certainly well-deserved. We're very proud of all that you've done, all that you do, continue to do, and all that you have done for our district, so that is a very, very great, great recognition. Now, we have a little unveiling to do, and you know, Chris is very big on unveiling, so...
Yeah, I'm like, don't click more than once.
I was getting orders to not click far.
So at this point, we are going to share the mascot name of the new middle school, where the board just was able to do a tour earlier this evening. And so one of our goals is to have this decided now, so that we can have all of the, the building as it's finished, have the name and the mascot and colors be part of that, put into that building. So we started, just like all of our other schools, we have a brand committee with Mr. Davis, the principal, who's back here for the big reveal, and some of the parents that we know will be part of that community, because they're that close to where the school is physically, but their children will be there 99.9% sure, since we haven't finished our redistricting. The staff has not been assigned yet, so staff are not part of this. So we went with the double blue, and to keep in the bear country theme, they are going to be the ruins.
Dun, dun, dun. Come on, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, come on up. [applause]
So it's Cubs, Bruins and Bears?
On that, on that campus with Cheshire's, Cheshire's the Cubs. The Berlin Middle School is going to be the Bruins. Go ahead, you can. And then obviously Berlin High School are the Bears. So we have had, we've had, had multiple now, Mr. Rafe, Mrs. Davis and, and other members of DLT have started participating with the redistricting process. So that is well underway. There's just the logic to the proximity of it.
Very cool.
So they're getting old posters with the, the, the Bruins. So we do not have the actual logo yet. That will be the next thing that we work with, uh, that we want to do. At least have the name and the colors and get reminded of the Bruins.
One action item to mention, there is a replacement chiller going in at Oak Creek through Prodigy Building Solutions. So just another update to our building. It's always good to have working air conditioning and chillers in your, all of your buildings. And then important dates coming up, we have curriculum nights, high school curriculum night was actually last night. Preschool and elementary, grades K-2, middle school, grades six through eight and elementary three through five. And then our next board meeting is September 8th. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Rafe?
Just a quick comment. We, as Chris said, we had the opportunity to tour the new middle school and it is beautiful. It's going to be an amazing facility and I just really can't congratulate everyone who's, who's put in the, the time and attention to all of the details and just all the different ways that we could do it. For the students that are lucky enough to go there, it's going to be an amazing thing. So can't congratulate you enough. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is treasurer's report. Mrs. Hatfield?
Good evening. We have a few updates that I wanted to share related to our employee benefits. For those in the audience that may or may not know, the treasurer's department is responsible for all of the employee benefits for health, our wellness program and any other ancillary benefits that are available. So we have a couple of updates that we are working on getting ready for our staff. Employee Access Center is an item that we have spoke about before. We are ready to launch that and get that out to the staff. But this is an online portal that is directly linked to our e-finance plus software that we've just put through in our ERP implementation. This will give live access to payroll data, direct deposit information, deductions, et cetera, to our staff so they can get onto the portal and use it at their convenience. So we're ready to release that, excited to have that available. We are working on a RFP for the voluntary insurance coverages. We have had staff ask about additional hospital indemnification, accidental coverage, critical illness coverage. And at this point, we have services available through Aflac, who has partnered with us. But we've never taken an approach from a district-wide perspective to really get a nice group rate and to have an individual company that can offer a breadth of items to our staff. So we are pleased that we will be able to partner with MetLife to offer those components. We'll put together the data and the information and have it available to staff at open enrollment. These are items that are no cost to the district. I want to make sure that we're very clear on that. They're voluntary coverages that the employee can choose to take advantage of some group rates for. We will wrap up our metal, excuse me, major medical RFP in the coming weeks. We should have the data and available in the next week or so. And then we have finalist presentations that first week in September. So myself, our insurance broker and our payroll team will be available to talk to the finalists that have submitted bids, ask questions, talk about their customer service, really try to dive into what they can offer the district aside from just pricing. And we'll have results of that to bring to the board in September.
So on that one, really no coverage changes, just provider, a potential.
Provider change, correct. The pieces, parts, for lack of a better description, of the coverage are part of our association agreements. So without negotiating different components, we're not going to change those. So what our vendors are quoting us is, here's the coverage, here's our book, here's our certified coverage that we offer. What would you charge us to offer the same or better? You know, some of the things that we've seen anecdotally coming through is more technology from vendors. Some vendors have better apps, better use of technology for the employees. So we'll take a look at all of those things and kind of figure out where we can have the most bang for our buck and keep the same coverage that we have. And then finally, we have several action items. We have our June financials. This is important to kind of point out and notice that positive 4.5 million to the general fund. Because it's our fiscal year in close, when we say we have a net positive of 4.5 million, what we're saying is that we didn't, that 4.5 will go back into the reserve and it adds to our overall cash balance. We talked about some of the revenue pieces that helped us get here. One was the return of fees from the Delaware County Auditor. That helped bring our revenue up above where we thought we might be. And then we also had a timing consideration with our food service transfer. What we found was we, we planned for it. We had the board approve the transfer of funds. But what we didn't know in that timing was to include it in our appropriation measures that we put forward for the board approval in June. So there's a little bit of a timing that 2 million is going to post in fiscal year '23, but it's still a net positive for us. The other portion that is helping that net positive is that our encumbrances were higher. We're still seeing some lag in billing. And so that lag in paying those helps keep the, makes the cash balance look a little better because the expenditures come in. So we were under expenditures in a couple of category and then had some delay in payments. So those are net positives that will be included in the next forecast. We'll be able to post those actuals and include that in the information going forward as we look at the next forecast. You will see fiscal year '22 closed as an actual and then see fiscal year '23 through '27 be forecasted. We also have some amended appropriations, again, just our budget adjustments that need to be made and approved by the board. And then June and July board meetings. There were several meetings in June and one in July. So I think we had four or five measures to bring forward and have you approve this evening. And finally, donations. We can't say enough for our community support. Along with our business partners that are excited to be a part of our students' lives, we have support groups. Our high school boosters in particular are highlighted this evening. I won't read through all of those donations, but I do want to say thank you to our athletic boosters for Liberty, Orange and Olentangy High School for providing additional funds for additional coaching. These are coaches that are above and beyond what the district would normally support through supplemental contracts. And so they're helping support that. Are there questions I can answer for you about any of the financials or other information we discussed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now move on to public participation.
We do have one individual for public participation that signed up. As a reminder, well, when I call your name, please join us at the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. And then we'll have, you'll have three minutes to speak about your item. May I please have Ms. Danielle Hayden join us at the podium?
Hi there. My name is Danielle Hayden. I'm at 5963 Ganey Court, Westerville, 4302. Well, I'd like to commend the administration on hiring math specialists in each of the buildings. It's currently a two-year commitment with hopes of keeping the specialists on. I'm wondering if this administration is really addressing the issue. Some employees are teaching multiple subjects, putting in the time, effort and preparation to teach that daily lesson and do it well. I know in the past that one teacher at Berkshire taught only one subject, eighth grade algebra one to five classes. So when I informed the principal that students who were engaged during the class lesson, because they corrected the teacher and they had to go to their seventh grade teacher because the teacher didn't know she was teaching incorrectly, that this teacher wrote seven times eight is 54 and it wasn't a typo, it was handwritten, and that low test grades were not entered before quarter end, the principal pulled me aside as I was a sub in the building and told me I was on a witch hunt and that I made her staff nervous. I stated the above facts to the principal and I was accused of a witch hunt. Now, this administration's hiring specialists, math specialists, because the students are in the red. But this scenario happened pre-COVID and the math specialists at the time were the parents, siblings, friends and hired tutors because the principal looked the other way. Now, this teacher didn't have a written evaluation in four years and you can listen to my comments because I've been here before. That was on June 9th. But last year's evaluation stood out. This teacher was intimidating, and I quote, to her students, which she had to address in class. The very definition of intimidation to frighten and make people lose confidence. And this is one of our teachers. Which leads me to the district possibly hiring health counselors, which you addressed at the top of the meeting. The district wants to focus on the wellbeing of our students and promoting mental health, wellness and prevention. Is the administration addressing the issue or putting a Band-Aid on a problem? When I subbed in the SLC room at Walnut Creek, I voiced concerns regarding the special needs teacher and spoke to guidance because the principal was absent on both occasions. The principal never questioned me on her return to school either time. Instead, I received a text letting me go of my position mid-February, only to ask me a few days later if I wanted to sub in the SLC room. Continuity is important, especially for special needs kids. The principal noted in her evaluation that year that she always put kids first. And I've seen that a lot through evaluations, yet she never took time to question the issue at hand or to question me.
Ms. Hayden, I apologize, but that is three minutes. Mr. O'Brien, would you?
Okay, thank you. A few years after I voiced concerns about this SL teacher, another aide came forward. And this teacher is on the disciplinary search on ODE and is no longer in Olentangy. But it took two years for someone else to speak up. So you want to talk about mental health. It needs to be addressed with administration. So to everyone in the district, do you want to be an onlooker and continue about your business like you didn't see anything? Or a witness, someone who stops and speaks to what they witnessed, what they saw? It's up to this administration, at the very least, to look into issues and to ask questions. As I've said before, I will continue to be a witness, even though my kids have graduated from Olentangy because every kid deserves to benefit from your slogan to maximize learning for every student. Thanks. I do have the text messages if you wanted to see from the principal and I have the evaluation. So I'm happy to share those.
Okay. We'll move on to our, our first and only discussion item, the future facility needs. Dr. Jack Finney?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be up here with you. The, I'm going to remind you briefly, I think it was about 2015. We brought forward, we started to notice our growing preschool needs combined with changes at the state level in terms of how we staff preschool classrooms and how many students we can put into preschool classrooms caused us to approach the facilities committee to explore possible solutions. We try to be very proactive as our enrollment grows and as policies change. And that's what led us into the building that we're in right now. So I'm coming to you this evening to discuss a couple of other programs that are causing us to have conversations with the facilities committee over the last year to bring the board's attention to those. Those of you who have been to the facilities committee meeting have heard these before. So first, I'm going to bring your attention to the Academy for Community Transition, the ACT program. The program occupies three classrooms over at the Olentangy Academy. The third classroom is, is a new classroom. It continues to grow. It's a very popular program. It's a necessary program and it's one that really does set Olentangy apart from other places. We support students ages 18 to 22 as we're required to, but we do it in a really, you know, fantastic program. Mr. Rafe mentioned it, how it was highlighted at Zulentangy this year. One of the things the facilities committee has been looking at for some time now is that the restrooms in that facility are inadequate for the needs of ACT. Causes us to close down a restroom entirely at different points throughout the day, causing interruptions to the other programs in the building. As that program grows, the stress that it creates on the restroom and the limits that it places on the other programs within the Olentangy Academy facility just grow larger. So we have been exploring opportunities for how we can best support the ACT program moving forward. Another program which is newer to the Olentangy Academy, but not newer to the district, is Teacher Academy. This is the program that allows our students to explore teaching as a profession. Dr. Wallach, in an earlier presentation, you mentioned that, you know, we want, we don't want students to graduate and then be faced with, okay, so now what? This is a great way for students to learn what it means to be a teacher and if it's something they really want to pursue in their career. Last year, we had about 45 students. I would say two years ago, we were around 30 students. It was, it was a program that was going down in numbers. We had, we have a great partnership with local universities, specifically Otterbine is offering some full ride scholarships to our Teacher Academy students. We centralized the program at the, at the Olentangy Academy. We created the Educator Rising Club. And when I say we, that would be Sunday Weekly is the teacher who, who is leading the Teacher Academy. By centralizing it, enrollment boosted up to 45. The very next year, this year, we're starting with 64 students who are enrolled in Teacher Academy. It's being very successful. You might recall that in the spring of last year, our Educator Rising Club, which was just created last year, already earned state and national recognition. And I believe eight of our students went to Washington DC to compete, which is a great experience for those students. Teacher Academy exists in what used to be the conference room at the Olentangy Academy building. It's about a five or 600, I'm going to guess, square foot room at the academy. We've run it on a hybrid model to, because all of the students can't fit in there at one time. We've also got a temporary classroom that students will periodically go to at Olentangy High School to accommodate the growth this year. We did not have that classroom last year. So again, this is a success, but it is compounded with our growth and the existing success of the STEM program to, to cause us to enter in facility needs discussions. Here at this building, the technology department supports over 16,000 district-owned devices, which is a 33% increase since we moved into this building. Additionally, we have 12,000 BYO devices that they support. Those are staff and student devices that come into the district on a daily basis. We have, I want to say it was four years ago, maybe, we, the technology department inherited the phone system and we did a VoIP phone system now throughout the district that they do a great job of managing. All of our security cameras are managed by the technology department now, as well as all of our instructional and operational software. A few months ago, I know after a board meeting, some of you were able to tour the technology area. We have 28 employees in a 4,000 square foot space at the other end of this building on the first floor that as we continue to grow, we continue to feel pressure in terms of our build space and our warehousing capabilities. our build space and our warehousing capabilities when we buy a device, whatever that might be. Right now, if you were to go down there, I think you would still see a lot of Usonics in a space which are interactive panels that go in classrooms. We have to unbox those, we have to build those out with software, and then deploy them to buildings. We do the same with our Chromebooks, with our teacher laptops. We have very limited build space, so that causes us to pay warehousing fees to the vendors. Our People Services Department, which you would have to walk through to get to the Technology Department, also grows along with our enrollment. Our English learner population specifically has grown 192%. Our students with disabilities population has doubled in size, or grown 50%, I should say, in the IEP and 504 student enrollment since we've moved into this facility in 2016. We have 22 employees that work in the People Services Department in 3,000 square feet, plus we have 13 other district-level people services employees that we work out of various facilities around the district. Shared office spaces at Shell Meadows, other office spaces, Shanahan, our preschools, et cetera, around the district. And the needs of our students, as our student population grows, causes our people services staff to grow, and that is a looming stressor that we have in the district. Also, our business office, which operates out of this facility, could realize greater savings through bulk purchasing and custodial supplies, bulk purchasing of custodial supplies if we had additional storage space. We have one centralized warehouse right now. We call it the Storage Barn, or the Barn, at the OHS site, and it is at capacity. Next, we have the Robotics Club, which you're probably familiar with. This started as a club, it's still called a club, but it's very much an extracurricular. It has a support organization that the board approved in January that provides a lot of financial support to the club. We have over 100 students enrolled in clubs at elementary, middle, and high school. They compete in what's called the First Robotics League. Our high school team went to Houston, I want to say it was March or April of this year, and competed internationally. It was an international competition, and did quite well. And there are a lot of great opportunities that relate to the Bridge Program that we talked about earlier, when it comes to robotics as well. Currently, the high school team meets at the Olentangie Orange High School's Industrial Tech Classroom. The middle school team meets in a math classroom at Orange High School, it's the advisor's classroom. And the elementary team meets at Allen Creek Elementary in their media center, or in their cafeteria, depending on their purpose of the evening when they meet. But this is a club that is growing in popularity. This is obviously a growth potential in terms of employment opportunities and student engagement opportunities, as robotics is an ever-increasing presence in all aspects of life. So the club, for the last year, I have unsuccessfully tried to find 4,000 to 5,000 square feet of space for them to utilize, to have. The club owns a lot of their own equipment, to build the robots that they need, but they don't have space to keep that equipment and build it, and causes problems. In exploring other clubs nationally, probably the coolest one is the club that's sponsored by NASA down in Houston, where those students end up working, some of them, if they want to work for NASA. NASA provides them with space. So we were trying to find a business in our area that has some extra warehouse space that was willing to do a tax write-off and give some space to the school, and we haven't found any yet. But it is still a need that we have, that I wanted to bring the board's attention to. And then lastly, we have our Oasis program. This picture was taken just this morning. Dr. Allward sent it to me to include. So this is this year's Oasis crew, so far. Right now, Oasis lives in two structures behind Shanahan Middle School, and three classrooms inside of Shanahan Middle School. As you know, it serves students in middle schools and high schools. It has 11 and 1/2 permanent staff members, four subs, and 128 students as of this week in those six classrooms. But each year, enrollment grows. The last two years, we've topped out in the 220 students range that have been in Oasis when the year ended. And every year ends with a waitlist, because the demand is there. Oasis does a fantastic job of helping students succeed, graduate high school, find employment, become, not just find employment, but be good employees, and just builds great relationships with kids. So what I've presented to you are some of the needs that we've discussed with the Facilities Committee over the past year. I'm going to share with you now some of the range of solutions that have been discussed. Mr. Gordon and Mr. Sexton are here, depending if you have questions, I will graciously defer to them in their respective areas of expertise. But what we can continue to do with, what we will continue to do right now with People Services is to continue to utilize small spaces in newly constructed facilities. We walked through Berlin Middle School, obviously, and, you know, when we redistrict, we'll point some growth to Berlin. So Berlin Middle would open with hopefully around 800 students, grow towards 1,000 students, and in those years in between, there's some flexibility in a new school that we can allocate to needs, that's kind of what we've done. So certainly, we can accommodate some People Services staff for the next few years in that regard. The Robotics Club is, again, over their capacity at Orange High School. They, 100 students across four high schools allows them to have the club that they want to have, but one of the things we will be exploring is breaking the club into four separate clubs, creating more supplementals, which is what funds the advisor of each club, so that each high school might have their own robotics club. That's one alternative that we can do to accommodate a continued robotics program, but it would look different than we have now. We can obviously continue to pay our warehousing fees for custodial supplies and tech supplies as appropriate. The ACT program, the Academy for Community Transition, like that, again, that program has grown from one to two to now three classrooms. It is at capacity, unless we eliminate a program from Olentangie Academy. What we will do is divide the ACT program into two programs housed at two separate high schools. There would be a staffing cost to that, but we can continue the ACT program, housing it in the high schools, but it does change, it changes what makes that program special, because it is out of a high school. The point of the program is to transition the students to life after high school. It's what sets our program apart from some other districts, so we'll have to explore those possibilities. But those are kind of the low-level, lower-cost, non-Facilities Committee ideas that have been discussed. And then, what has been discussed at the Facilities Committee has been the possibility of expanding Olentangie Academy, moving some square footage to the east side of Olentangie Academy, in order to create a permanent home for ACT with suitable restrooms. The committee, the Facilities Committee, is well aware, the plumbing structure of the existing academy building does not allow for additional restrooms to be built within the facility, unless we tear up the floor and add larger diameter plumbing pipes. But if we were to construct an addition to, Mark can tell I'm reaching my limit of what I know about, I'm talking plumbing here. Good job with the straight face. If we were to construct an addition to the academy, we could, the plumbing comes in from that direction, we could create classrooms and restrooms that have basically a permanent facility for the ACT program with suitable restrooms for them, that allows some room for growth in the future. We could also put a second story, I've learned this, when you build up, it's cheaper than building out. That means something once in a while to me. If we did a second story on the facility, on the addition, we could relocate the robotics need to the academy, and add the academy, add robotics into the academy program, which Mrs. Sedoti, who runs the academy building quite well, is, you know, we've talked about, is that possible, is that something, and she's very excited about that as a possibility. She knows it's just a possibility, in theory. She's not selling it to anyone. But Mrs. Sedoti gets excited about ideas sometimes. We could also, we've looked at the possibility of constructing a technology facility that would provide the warehousing space for technology and business needs, which then, if we were to remove some of that technology space from this building, it creates that space open at this building that would allow People Services to expand into the 4,000 square feet currently occupied by technology. So the Facilities Committee has been exploring that as a possibility. And then lastly, you know, we, the Facilities Committee has not, at this point, this is a future item for the committee, but dove back into the single permanent facility for Oasis. But we continue to see the growing needs, there's parking issues over there, and there's obviously space issues, and that's something that I would like to ask that committee to continue to explore, to get back into. It's something that they've looked at, it's not new to them. Oasis has been in a couple different locations over the years, and the Facilities Committee has always been involved. In general, I just want to say that the Facilities Committee is always wonderful to work with. They're such experts in their respective fields. They dedicate so much time to these problems in helping us to identify possible solutions that involve facilities. Mr. Gordon does a great job with that committee. It's always a pleasure to work with him. But the presentation, again, in summary, was to share with you what we're talking about in terms of academic needs as the district continues to grow, and what we've done thus far to explore some possible solutions. Don't have any formal proposals to make at this point, but I would be interested in any questions or comments you have in reaction to that. And obviously, Mr. Lester, you're on the Facilities Committee, and please feel free to share anything that you think I missed.
So as part of the possible solutions, did you explore, particularly for the administrative and technology teams, different workforce planning and workforce models that could free up square footage? For example, all these associates need to come in every day, or could they work from home? That could free up square footage for the other needs?
Yes. Mr. Sexton and I have talked about the ability of remote work. Some of them have been able to actually test that through the past two years during the pandemic for various reasons. The portion of the workforce that could do that is probably, I would say, 15, 20% of, because there's a lot of also that building.
Even just beyond technology, so People Services, Treasury, anybody in this building, could you create a more flexible work model, get freed up square footage?
Yeah. So I do think that, I know that we obviously have tested that in practice the last two years, there is some flexibility with that. I would say that, no, we have not explored that to its fullest extent of what that would look like in terms of all of our negotiated agreements. Here, we're talking mostly non-union, so that gives us some more flexibility. But we could go through the job descriptions. Mr. Meyer, am I missing anything on that front that needs to be mentioned right now? Remote work?
We do have, it's not new to us. It is something that we have done prior to the pandemic and that we still have ongoing, but you're talking about it at a larger scale. That's worth exploring, sure.
And certainly, I mean, a lot of places are going to office sharing and other stuff that comes along.
Collaborative space. You just come in for meetings, you don't need an office. There are solutions that could be considered.
That's true. I think part of the issue with some of this stuff is that it's specialized space, right? It's either specialized learning space, or specialized warehouse space, or other stuff that, you know, if we had five people from People Services that didn't come in every day, it's not going to meet our warehouse needs, and so there are limits to some of it. But it's absolutely something we should be exploring. I mean, I know a lot of people post-pandemic are thinking about this.
And even in the warehousing, do you want to own a warehouse or just rent it? Why do you want to own warehouse space?
So that's something that the Facilities Committee did discuss, and Jeff, I'll do my best, but feel free to jump in if I misspeak, but with the rates in this area, with the long-term nature of the need, with the land that we already own, they felt it was more economical, that that was something that they did fully vet and the committee recommended.
I'd like to see the math on that.
Okay. Did he, he said he'd like to see the math on that, so. I don't know what's available in the notes.
Not right now.
Obviously not.
The short version is that if we were, if it was short-term, they felt like it would make sense to rent. The fact that the district's continued to grow, or continue to need space, that over that length of time, then the cost of building would be much less than continuing to rent. So that was the length of time we'd need it because of our continued growth. That was the summary of the discussion at the Facilities Committee.
And it was a pretty robust discussion, and there was certainly some luck at that. That was two or three meetings ago, so it's been a little while.
Yeah, it's just maybe they're right and they're wrong, that renting a small piece of a warehouse that's at scale, right, is renting to multiple tenants, multiple, it's a massive facility that we're a piece of, versus constructing our own subscale warehouse for a limited purpose is more economical.
Sure. Yeah.
I also think it's, we have to discuss all the different funding sources, to address these needs. If we have money left over from current bond issues that we can reallocate to hit a need that is cost-effective, gives us some bang for our buck on that, or capitalizing some of those things that we have.
And we also, I mean, we do have to think about, you know, locations, because we have other elementary schools coming up and other things, so we need to think about land that we're going to be using more broadly. So it's, I mean, it's certainly a good question.
Right. I mean, I have lots of questions, but you don't have, you don't have your suggestions yet, so I'll wait, because you may eliminate some of your, you know, possible solutions, I think was the slide title. So my only question is, what's your timetable to come back with what you think, and the math and all?
Sure, sure.
What's your timetable?
So I presented those to you in the order of pressing need. So like the ACT program, I think it's very realistic that the ACT program could need a fourth classroom next year, and that as of, you know, we were 12 months away from not being able to house it in the academy building any longer. We have a special education population in terms of autism. This is a stat that continues to just astound me, that is four times the state average. And that's because people come here for certain services, you know, people of means, and that's flattering, and it also brings challenges. So that is, that program, as it's gained some notoriety, has really, that coupled with the county developmental disabilities in Delaware County, which are very well-reputed, this is very much a destination county and district for students with certain needs. So that would be a first need. So very soon, I don't know if I can put it any more specific, but I would like to be able to present something very soon.
Sue rather than later.
Yeah, on that one. But so, I would say that the furthest out, I mean, anything's possible forever, right? One of my favorite Randy Wright stories, we all have them, right? But when Mr. Wright was the principal at Liberty, we brought him to a Facilities Committee meeting, and they were trying to figure out, what's the capacity at Liberty High School? And they said, well, could you do school with 2,000 kids? And he said, well, yeah. Could you do it with 21, 22, 23, 2400? And he kept saying, yeah. And the committee was getting frustrated, because they thought he was being difficult. He was thinking like a principal who was saying, you put the kids in there, and I have to figure it out, no matter what. I can do it with 2,500. Do I want to? No. But is that the best environment? No, but could we do it? That's my job, is to figure it out. It was a real aha for the committee of, you know, we can always make it work. We can continue to distribute to People Services Department, we can continue to leave Oasis where they're at in cap enrollment. But there is a larger discussion that isn't, that does not belong to the Facilities Committee, that is, what kind of district do we want to be in terms of these things?
Yeah, and again, we've got a lot of kids in the robotics program. It's one of these, we're a victim of our success. We started the ACT program, and it grows. We started the Robotics Club, and it now has hundreds and hundreds of kids in it, and they're doing really well. Oasis is another one.
Oasis had six students in my first year. Oasis had six students in my first year, and then 11, 12 school year. I mean, you know.
Robotics could be a public-private partnership opportunity.
Right.
It's been presented to the business advisory committee multiple times. We've explored some opportunities. This is something we're going to absolutely try, but it's, that's exactly something that we should and hopefully can find, but it's difficult.
Going back to your question for my fellow board members, I'm thinking too about how the summer schedule shifts hours, Monday through Thursday. I don't know if that works as well as in what you're thinking of, you know, you've got some people here Monday through Thursday, and then some people here Tuesday through Friday, or some people are seven to whatever.
My sixth grader's in favor of a four-day work week. He's actually recently pitched that to me. So, if you want to hear more, if you want to hear more, I'll set you up.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be glad to have a six-day work week, so.
All right. Thanks. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. I will now present Board Action Items A and B, A being the resignation of Ms. Hatfield, as we mentioned earlier, and the approval of the membrane of understanding with the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, Local 4, and AFL-CIO, Local 222. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on Board Action Items A and B? Please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, please present the superintendent action items.
Yes, sir. I'd like to approve superintendent action items A through F for approval.
Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the superintendent action item? All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, please present the superintendent action items.
Yes, sir. I'd like to approve superintendent action items A through F for approval.
Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the superintendent action item? All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to go back into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22G1 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment of a public employee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we will return only to adjourn. We won't take any action when we come back. So, with that, please call the roll, Ms. Hatfield.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Again, I thank you for joining us tonight. Our next meeting is September 8.
Order at 9:44. All right, I'll call the roll. I'm gonna get the order wrong, but I don't care. Uh, Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Yes. Alphabetical, so it's Mr. Da- Dr. Dabaco?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien, yes. Motion carries.